He's in Wisconsin. He's every summer. Winter turned off? When winter turned off?
I think I did have it turned off for the P and Z meeting earlier.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum. Please make sure your cell phones are silenced or on vibrate, one or the other. I'd ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. United States of America, and to the Republic of Republicans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rick?
Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful for this beautiful night that we can gather as citizens and community leaders. A special blessing upon this evening and for the deliberations that will take place. And pray that things will be in the best interest of this beautiful town that we all live in and call home. Father, we're grateful for the moisture that has blessed the ground and helped to bring moisture to this parched area. We ask that thou would bless us with more. And Father, we are especially grateful for the beautiful country that we live in, the freedoms that we enjoy. Please watch out after our public safety individuals that are protecting us and keeping us safe. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Rick. Item B on our agenda is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the Town Council. The Town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in Call to the Public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard in Call to the Public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. I don't have any requests for anybody to speak tonight, so I will go ahead and move on to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council requests that an item or items be removed. Council members, however, may ask questions at any time without removing the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in the normal sequence. We have one item tonight. Are there any questions about this? Entertainer motion, Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D on our agenda is Business Before the Council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. We're going to rearrange our schedule just a little bit tonight. We're going to move D four up first, so those folks can go on with their evening. Item D four is Introduction of New Friends of the Library Officers. Our library director, Betsy Pack, will introduce them.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am so excited to invite you to introduce our new Friends of the Library Board. So I'm going to start with our president, Kathy Penrod. She has been a lifelong Pine Top resident, and she knows, I think, all of you, and she brings exceptional leadership and organizational and fundraising and people skills. Her deep passion for the library and in our town, as a Read Better Be Better volunteer, secretary for the Friends Group, is a perfect fit for her enthusiasm and her talents. I'm excited to have a partnership ahead under her leadership. Donna Hauszisak is not able to be here tonight, but she will be. She's a former member at large, but now she's going to be the vice president. And she's a retired teacher, so she brings a lot of strong advocacy for literacy, and she's been a wonderful volunteer with our Read Better Be Better program as well. Stephanie Borders is new to our community, but she has many years of experience with nonprofits, and she will be the secretary. And treasurer Jody David is here, and Jody also has been involved with Friends of the Library for at least a year or so, and she is currently the member at large moving into the treasurer role, and she will be using a lot of her previous experience as treasurer with another 501(c)(3) in her career. So many of you know Sue Singer, our most, what's the word? She has been the most long-lived Friends of the Library member, preceding all of these ladies and many other library directors. So she has served on several boards, and Sue is going to continue to be a member at large, and she brings a huge amount of energy. She's a well-known community member, selflessly giving her time and energy and expertise in many philanthropic causes such as Catholic charities, White Mountain Women's Club, Friends of Library, and the Pine Top Lakeside Historical Society. So she, you know, you may not know some of you board members who are newer, or council members that are newer, that the Friends of the Library paused in 2017, and it sort of just folded up and closed up shop after many, many years of being an active group. Sue was a part of that at that time, and so Sue was able to encourage me when I first came on board in 2020 to, let's get this going again. And luckily, the charter stayed active, and we had to wait for the fiscal year to kick in again, and John and Karen Dennison back there stepped in to be the president and the treasurer, and we've been off and running ever since. So we're really excited to continue to have Sue on our team. Judy Price, many of you know, she's going to be another current, she's going to continue as a current member at large. And Rosemary Cruz over here is a new member, but she's been a supporter of Friends the Library. Last year when they did that big Santa's Workshop thing, Kathy rounded up a ton of new interest and volunteers. So I think that's when Rosemary came in. She's a retired teacher, so she has a huge background knowledge in literacy as well. So each of these terrific individuals have been active in the past with Santa's Workshop, the book sales, the Read Better Be Better volunteers, book donations and organization. That's a huge part of what they do for us, and there's many other wonderful volunteers, but three of them are here tonight, and we're just really excited to have them be a part of our new board, and they've stepped up to give their time and efforts because they really care about our library and our community and the library staff. So we look forward to a great year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. I would like for you all to stand so we could recognize you. John and Karen, thank you for all your contributions. We know that you've been an important part of this.
Four years.
Four years.
John and Karen did four years.
Yeah, so ladies, thank you for stepping up. I know that Friends of the Library is very valuable to the community and all the things that you have done for our library and for our community and for the kids. It's been wonderful, and I know you've taken on the Autumn Fest this year, so I know that's going to be a great event as well.
We were in the parade last year, too. The past two years have been in the parade.
That's right. Yeah, thank you for reminding us of that, Betsy. Okay, thank you. Anything we can do to keep helping you, we very much appreciate what you do. Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay. We're going to go back to our regular agenda, item D one, and our eagle is probably getting pretty toasty in there. Hold on to her so she doesn't pass out. This is a proclamation of Breeze as the official American bald eagle of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona. Whereas two nonprofit entities located within Pine Top Lakeside, the White Mountain Nature Center and Land on Sky Wildlife Experiences, operate an award-winning tourist attraction showcasing free flighted raptors for the education and entertainment of tourists and residents. And whereas the raptor show operators have been preparing an American bald eagle for free-flight demonstrations as part of their exhibition. And whereas the bald eagle being trained, named Breeze, came from an animal rehabilitation facility in Buffalo, New York, where she was treated for a broken wing but was deemed non-releasable because of her injury. And whereas, at the request of the rehabilitation facility, the United States Fish and Game Department transferred Breeze to the care of Land on Sky in October of 2023. And whereas, since the date she arrived, Land on Sky personnel, who are certified professional bird trainers, have been training Breeze daily using animal choice, positive reinforcement training methods. And whereas Breeze is ready to be shown to the public as part of the free-flight exhibition, and whereas, excuse me, Friday, June 20th, is National American Bald Eagle Day in the United States, which commemorates the bald eagle as a symbol of the United States and our freedom. And whereas, a few days later, on July 4th, 2025, it will mark the 249th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, which marked our country's freedom from rule by the British monarchy. And whereas Breeze is one of the very few free-flighted American bald eagles in the United States available for public viewing, it exemplifies our ideals of freedom to the public, both in her manner and powerful imagery. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do proclaim that Breeze, the American bald eagle, is hereby the official American bald eagle of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, at Town Hall this 20th day of June, 2025. Although we are in July, we attempted to do this in June. So I would like to introduce John Glitzos, who is Land on Sky as well as the Nature Center and your eagle friend here. So if you would like to say anything, please come up.
My eagle friend here is actually Wendy, Breeze's cousin. She is also our head trainer, Belinda, my wife. And I'll never live this down. It's really hot in there. It was a great idea, though. We really appreciate the town recognizing this beautiful bald eagle. In fact, Sterling was at the show today. We have been bringing Breeze out every other day or so, and she did come out on July 4th, and the people that were there were thrilled. And we want to continue doing that. We're sold out for the next eight or nine days. It's been like that all season, and we think it'll continue. We're going to have to build a bigger facility. Thank you very much, council members, and Mayor Irwin, thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to us. I actually saw the show about three, four weeks ago, and Breeze came out, and my little grandkids were right in the front, and I think they were a little petrified because they didn't move. They didn't speak, they didn't do anything. She's big.
She is a very big bald eagle, yes.
Yes.
Breath-taking. So yesterday, we put new lighting in her enclosure, so now as guests come by her enclosure, they can see her clearly, and everybody takes a step back. They had no idea that eagles get that big. She's beautiful, she's wonderful, and she'll be here for everyone to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy.
You and the mayor or the council?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
We're going to have to go. We have an enrichment night program going on at the Angel Center, and she's supposed to be there, too.
Okay, good night. Okay, well then move on to item D two on our agenda, which is a presentation by the Pine Top Lakeside Pickleball Club on fundraising efforts for the Community Pickleball Court Expansion Project. We have Mark Dilts, the board president, and I think you probably have some of your team with you.
I do, I do. I don't know how I followed that up. Nobody's in costume in our club, so I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Mark Dilts. As Mayor said, I'm the board president for the Pine Top Lakeside Pickleball Club. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and talk to you about our club and the partnership that we've developed with the Public Works Department in order to try to get this expanded pickleball facility built. So let's talk about our club first. This summer, we have over 400 members playing at the gym, so tremendous number of people. Within our club, we have seven board members, and I'd like to introduce some of those to you tonight that are here. They're elected to serve two-year terms with their club. Let's see. So all our board members, please stand up. This is Lynn Marston, our board secretary. In the back is Gary Snyder, our board vice president. This is Mike Coolmuth, our board treasurer. And this is Brenda Lee, who's also on the board. We had two other board members that weren't able to make it. Alexis Snyder was not able to make it due to health concerns, and I think Garth Orkney, who you know, was out of town tonight, so. So as many of you have probably heard, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country. I know you've probably heard this over and over. If you tried it, you'd probably understand why. It's easy to learn, fun to play, and it's a great way to connect with other people socially. So I'm kind of curious, because we talked about this within our club, about how many of you have ever tried pickleball? Show of hands. Almost all of you guys have. So we'd love to have you guys come to our club sometime and play more, but since you're not actually a member of our club yet, we would like to make you honorary members, so we would like to present you with, and Lynn Marston, our board secretary, is going to present you all with t-shirts that you'll be honorary members of our club. And you'll find out that these are also advertisements on the back. We're advertising our fundraising. So. So let me tell you a little bit more about our club. Our club started back in 2012 and became a 501(c)(3) organization. It was not until fall of 2023 that we were not a summer-only club, and we began operating year-round. So now we're operating year-round for the last two years. In 2023, we began offering free beginners' lessons, and since that time, we've taught between 100 and 150 beginners. I want to let you know that pickleball is so much more than just a place to get some exercise. If you come to our club, it's a place that makes people healthier, both physically and mentally. I've had so many people tell me that the club has provided them a social connection and a sense of community that they have not found elsewhere. And I've heard so many testimonies, too, of people that have come and talked to me. They said they were sitting at home, they found our free newspaper ad, then they came and tried our free pickleball lessons, and now, they said, for some of them, they said it's been life-changing, because now they've got a group of people they hang out with, they've got a sense of purpose, and they're getting exercise. So needless to say, our club has been growing by leaps and bounds. Over the last year, we have served at least 500 players on only our three indoor courts that we've got, so we're busting at the seams. This summer, we had to reach out to Public Works and add hours in the evening just to try to accommodate all of the need for courts, and so as you can see, there is just a huge need for this outdoor court development. I think.
Yeah, hi, Mark. I just ran back, and Tony's having problems pulling it up on the computer. We checked it right before the meeting, and it was there, so Matt just ran back to try to help him.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
So we were just going to display the drawing, and I think, Mayor, you've seen it. I think if you all recall, last November, Public Works presented to you all and showed you the plan to build eight outdoor courts. There's not a real big version of it, but there's eight outdoor courts. There's going to be paved parking, and there's also going to be a restaurant facility so we can graduate from our porta-potties. I think, you know, Mayor, you were at the Town Hall meeting we had with the pickleball club and the Public Works folks the other day, and as you can tell, we've got a fantastic partnership with Matt and his Public Works team. Matt and Melina have been extremely supportive of us and the services that we're providing to the community. Just kind of give you a quick timeline on our fundraising. Back in February, we met with Matt and Melina to review the facility expansion plan and course of action. So our club committed to raise at least $100,000 by the end of October. In November, this coming up, the plan is for Matt and Melina will put together a grant proposal to Arizona Parks and Trails that includes the club's $100,000 contribution as well as the Public Works in-kind contribution of labor and equipment. So with those financial contributions from the club and the resources of the Public Works Department, Matt and Melina feel it's very likely that we're going to receive the 100% match grant for this project in early 2026 and be ready for a 2026 construction start. So this is the same grant, I think you all know, that Joel used to build their pickleball courts. So with your approval, we're hoping to break ground in 2026. So a bit about our fundraising, I want to kind of update you all on where we're at on that. And while the club has built up a significant amount of funds through the years from our membership dues, our board has set a goal of raising an additional $100,000 to make sure that Matt and his team have the resources necessary to complete this project in a single phase. So timeline-wise, in March, we kicked off our fundraising, and we made flyers and started requesting donations from businesses and individuals. We also started a monthly 50-50 raffle at the club to get people to contribute and make some money there. In April, we hosted a pickleball tournament to raise some money. In May, you all may have seen some stuff in the paper about this. We held a silent auction at the gym over Memorial Day weekend that raised quite a bit of money. And in May, we also started selling these t-shirts that helped us raise some funds and also makes it so that our members can be a walking advertisement for our fundraising. We will be hosting another pickleball tournament coming up next month in August, and bottom line is, our club fully expects that we're going to be able to meet our goal of contributing at least $100,000 for the November grant proposal to Arizona Parks and Trails. So Mayor and council members, with your support, I believe that this new Community Pickleball Center can be a tremendous resource to the town. It will allow us to grow, continue to grow pickleball locally. It will be a resource that can be used by the local schools, and I think you all know Gary Corcoran, that was the high school pickleball coach. He said this would be a great asset that could be used if they restart the pickleball club over there. And it will also allow us to host tournaments, which would bring in more tourism dollars to the town. So into my presentation, do you all have any questions?
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Comments? I think we all appreciate the partnership we have with the pickleball group. You've helped us out a lot with maintaining the gym and keeping it up to par, and I look forward to continuing with this, so it's pretty exciting. I believe the next step is to get a design drawn up.
Right.
That you all agree with, you know, with your input and with our staff's input, and continue moving forward, so.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think it'd be great. Okay. We'll move on then to item D three, which is Interview and Possible Adoption of Resolution Numbers 251781 and 251782 for the appointment of two members to fill vacancies on the Pine Top Lakeside Planning and Zoning Commission with terms expiring July 27th of 2028. Excuse me, 2028. Interviews will be conducted in the order which letters of interest were received. Jeremiah, I'm going to let you talk about this a little bit, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are fortunate enough to have community members that are interested in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've mentioned this before, it's not always an easy job, but it's a job that needs to be done. And so I'm grateful for the three applicants that submitted and their interest, and even if, I'd like to encourage you, even if you aren't appointed tonight, to keep trying, because we do have, we always have vacancies about once or twice a year, it seems like. So just keep that in mind. And with that being said, I'm just going to go ahead and jump into the CDR. As mentioned, the terms of Commissioner John Soskow and Commissioner Allison Stewart, two of the long-serving commissioners on the Pine Top Lakeside Planning and Zoning Commission, will expire July 24, 2025. They both indicated that they are not interested in being reappointed, and so that's why we have these two vacancies. Even if they had, if they wanted to continue, they would have had to apply, and they did not, so that's, it's indicative of that they do not want to serve any longer. Now, we're grateful that they have served for as long as they did. Allison served for seven years, and John for nine years. It's a long time, both these guys, 16 years combined on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I see three members of, former members of the Planning and Zoning Commission sitting on the Town Council, and so you guys know what it takes to be part of that committee, part of the recommended body to the Town Council, and so keep that in mind, applicants, when you're up here presenting, that you have three people that have been there, done that, so. I just want to mention that. And as a result of the expiring terms, there are two vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The individuals appointed to these positions will serve terms, as the mayor mentioned, July 27th, 2028. And currently, the commission has two members that reside within unincorporated areas of the town, and three members that reside within the town boundaries, meaning one of the vacant seats must be filled by a member of the community that resides within the town boundaries. This is per town code Title 17, 17.116010. The town received letters of interest qualifications from Derek Kaby, Laramie Cormick, and Mary Jane Mimi Sorensen, expressing their desire to, on the Pine Top Lakeside Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Kaby and Ms. Sorensen reside within the incorporate boundaries of the town, while Mr. McCormick resides in an unincorporated area. In accordance with eligibility requirements, all three applicants meet the qualification to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So without further ado, I would just go ahead, I guess, who are we going to interview first? Derek?
I'm going to start with Derek.
Derek, come up forward.
Yeah, I think we'll have the other two leave, right? Mackenzie will take you out and then come get you when we're ready for you. So I'm going to let you introduce yourself, and then we do have a series of questions we're going to ask you, so go right ahead, Derek.
All right.
Hang on just a second.
Okay.
I'm wide out yet.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm Derek Kaby. I live behind Luirage High School in Moon Ridge Estates. I love this community, and I know that we're at a point where we're balancing the growth versus keeping our small-town feel, so I look forward to serving on Planning and Zoning Commission to achieve that, so.
Okay, so what motivated you to pursue this position, and what do you hope to achieve during your tenure?
Okay. I've tried twice. There are times of charm. I do think that, I think that my experience of being here in this community for 27 years, 28 years, I know the good that goes in this town, and I want to add my voice to what can happen in this town. I know that the Planning and Zoning Commission just makes suggestions or recommendations to the Town Council, and the Town Council votes to approve them, and I think that my voice could be a word of reason to you as a council.
All right, Derek. When weighing the outcomes of planning and zoning decisions, how do you prioritize competing interests, such as residential, commercial, and environmental concerns?
Obviously, there's ordinances and laws and state laws and stuff like that. You can't just make stuff up, so you have to follow the ordinances and policy of the town.
Counsel for now.
What are the most pressing zoning issues facing our community, and how would you address them?
Recently, you guys put a position open for code enforcement. There's a lot of dilapidated properties. That's a priority. We've had several opportunities for businesses to come. I think that that's a priority. That's it. That's it.
Counselor Turner?
How would you balance the need for development with the need to preserve green spaces?
That's a great question.
And historical landmarks?
That's a hot topic whenever that comes up. We are limited in what we can grow in this town, being that we're close to reservation and close to the Forest Service and, and close to, we only have so much. And, but, but property ownership has rights. Obviously, you, we have a limit to our infrastructure, roads and stuff like that. So you would, you would prioritize what, what the town can do and what they're able to do, so, with, with the tools and resources that the town has.
Thanks.
Counselor Phillips?
Thank you. How would you ensure trans, excuse me, how would you ensure transparency and fairness in your decision-making processes regarding planning and zoning?
I think that I would, every meeting's online, which is awesome. I think that that's one thing the town has done great at. Agendas are online, future agendas are online within the town code or the state code where they have to be. I think I would, I'd be able to explain every recommendation that I either didn't recommend or did recommend on why. I think you have to stand for what you, you've agreed to, so.
Counselor Heisler?
How would you handle feedback from a community member with opposing viewpoints on a given issue?
Everybody that lives here has, has a voice and their voice needs to be heard. Not everybody has the full knowledge of the whys and why not things happen or can or cannot happen. So I, I've always approached people who disagree with me as, hey, you're my friend first and, and let's agree on the things that we can agree on and, and I'll explain you to the reason why I voted or recommended the way that I recommended, so, yep.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. We appreciate you coming before us tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening.
If you could just kind of introduce yourself a little bit and then we have a series of questions for you.
Counsel, city clerk, city manager. My name's Larry McCormick. I live in one of the four county islands in Lake Pine Top Lakes. I've lived there since, I had to look it up and pull my title work out, since June of 2015. I've lived in Arizona since the early 80s. Lived in Scottsdale for around 25 years, moved on to Prescott for five, and then found my way here in town. As I heard from Rick earlier at one time, he retired too early. Well, so did I. I think I retired when I was 57 years old and when I moved up here, I became involved in a lot of volunteer work. I was on the Board of Directors for a while at the Nature Center. I resigned that position, moved over to the SOP, Save Our Parks, where I'm on the board now. I'm also a social member of the Chamber of Commerce and a member of the Community Center slash Senior Center. Probably the most gratifying thing I do, though, is I was approached by Kathleen Norton, I don't know the broad lady, and she asked me at the Senior Center if I'd be willing to play cards with some of the patients at The Haven, which is a care center that many of you are probably aware of. And there's this one, there's about seven to 10 patients that show up every week on Fridays, Friday afternoon. And there's this one native lady, her name is Rosa, and she is, she's a double amputee, lost both her legs. And that woman is amazing. She has a smile on her face, cuts jokes. It, it's really gratifying to do the work. I'm mentally exhausted when I get home and it doesn't really last so long, but anyway.
All right, thank you, Larry. Can I start the questions now?
I'm sorry?
May I ask the first question? Are you ready for that?
Sure, of course.
Okay, so what motivates you to apply for this position and what do you hope to achieve during your tenure?
Well, I think one thing is to get more people involved in city government. It's, you know, you, council tries it with coffee at Mike's shop and we try the PVC at, you know, every first Wednesday. And we just, the response I think we both get is limited. How's that, is that a good way to explain it? And somehow we need to get more people involved to express our ideas and understand what you as a council are doing.
Vice Mayor?
Larry, when weighing the outcomes of planning and zoning decisions, how do you prioritize competing interests such as residential, commercial, and environmental concerns?
Well, that's a good question. And prioritizing them is, you know, listening to our constituents and the few that come listening in, to their ideas and thoughts. You know, there's a, you've got commercial interests versus residential, and we also have probably another subdivision of that being full-time residents and part-time guests. What, what they want are two different things and we have to weigh both and try and fit what best into our general plan and, and go from there.
Counsel Fennel?
What are the most pressing zoning issues facing our community and how would you address them?
Well, the first thing is annexation. Whether you like it or whether you don't, it's a big financial, possible financial boost to the city, but a lot more work for Matt and his crew, certainly. So aside from annexation and how we would address it, you know, I, I attended a meeting, and I don't know if you've done others, at my HOA and it drew a big crowd. So it's a hot topic for part-time. In my area, it's about 80% part-time and 20% full-time. So can I check my cheat sheet here? Citizen input again is very important for all of us. And again, that plays into annexation and what we do with it. Other things, would, things that we probably need to continue with address are taper fire, fire restrictions and, you know, it's been pretty remarkable. I, I would happen to be driving, was it Thursday or Friday when the fire started? I was driving from my home to, to Sholo and I saw that smoke and I set alarm to a couple friends that I thought might have lived in that area. It was hard to tell, he just drives, drive north, you know, the road squares and everything, but it was a remarkable response. Streets were shut down, side streets, and there was a big crowd. I read the article in the paper today that I got, must've been yesterday, but it came today to me. So another thing that I think we need to address is citizen safety. With the lack of crosswalks, I've seen some, it's an accident waiting to happen, especially by the new and the old Circle K, people trying to cross four lanes of traffic, no crosswalk. I saw a lady with a kid in each hand trying to walk across and navigate to the bus across the street. I don't know if the buses are still going to meet there, they probably will. But in any case, I think that, I don't know what the answer is, quite honestly, but it's something we need to address.
Counselor Turner?
How would you balance the need for development with the need to save green spaces and historical landmarks?
Well, first of all, I have never been to the museum, but I need to get there. I, I'm very adamant about the fact that we need to preserve our past. People like Mary Ellen Bedore, Ryan, Reinhold, these guys, people have the, you know, before we even descend, most of us descended into Pine Top, I sat down with Mary Ellen, I know you've met with her too, Taber, sit in her back patio, that's a home run with the animals and she has names for the animals. But we need to preserve our past and how we do that, I don't know the best way, but it's kind of a juggling act between commercial and residential. And again, general plan, our co, city colleagues need to be adhered to in doing so.
Counselor Phillips?
How would you ensure transparency and fairness in your decision-making processes regarding planning and zoning?
Definitely, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you.
How would you ensure transparency and fairness in your decision-making processes regarding planning and zoning?
As you know, I'm the chairman of PBC and I think there's two trains of thought when it comes to, we tend to be a third voice or second voice of what we think's best and how it works. So as far as transparency, we need to be transparent in the way we do things. We need to be an open book and get to as many people as we can.
Thank you.
Counselor Heisler?
How would you handle feedback from a community members with opposing viewpoints on a given
Well, I believe that, again, we need to listen, you know, whether someone agrees with you or not, or myself, they've got a voice and they may have, bring up some points that maybe weren't considered. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're bad. Need to listen to everyone we can and make that decision, what we think is best for the city.
Thank you, Larry. We do appreciate you playing for this and I would ask Mackenzie to please bring Mimi If you could just kind of introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and then we have a series of questions we're going to ask you.
Sure. My name is Mary Jane Sorenson. Anybody that has known me any of my life, I have never gone by Mary Jane. I go by Mimi, hence the Mimi. I was born and raised here. I am 47 years old. I am married to a man that's been here near as long as I have. We have five kids, four grandkids, two dogs, and a partridge in a pear tree. I have, I'm a nurse practitioner here in the community. I've spent 21 years in the nursing profession. Seven, the last seven years I've spent in private practice as a nurse practitioner serving our community. I did leave short-term to go to college and then I returned home in 2010 where I have served our community in one fashion or another in the medical field ever since.
What motivates you to apply for this position and what do you hope to accomplish during your tenure?
Being born and raised here, being the daughter of parents that have owned businesses in the community, my husband and I own businesses in the community. You watch the ebb and flow, growth, challenge, failure, thriving. It would be nice to be able to put 10 cents in from a completely different perspective because I don't have any town council experience. I don't have planning and zoning. I don't have any of that. I just have the history of the town and wanting to help mold it, shape it, to sustain so that my kids and grandkids have something to grow and develop in is important to me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Mimi, when weighing the outcomes of planning and zoning decisions, how do you prioritize competing interests such as residential, commercial, and environmental concerns?
Benefit versus risk. What's the risk to the community? What's the benefit to the community? Challenges, I suppose, because you're always going to be up against the people that don't want to grow and change versus those that feel change is important because that's the only forward movement. So I would have to say risk and benefit.
Thank you.
One of the most pressing zoning issues facing our community and how would you address them?
That's a tough one, since I'm fully in the planning and zoning. I would have to say pressing issues would be, to me, outsider looking in, sustainability. I see our community growing and changing and I don't see a long-term, as much long-term sustainability as I'd like to see, especially with things change. For example, Sunrise has always been lucrative to town, but the less business we see at Sunrise, the less business we see in town. Therefore, our smaller businesses start to suffer and how do you help sustain a community that is no longer reliable on a resource that was once there? You have to find a better solution, maybe not always the most popular solution, but there's got to be happy media somewhere.
Thank you.
Counselor Turner?
How would you balance the need for development with the need to preserve green spaces and historical landmarks?
Ooh, that's a good one. I think that sustaining your landmarks and your history is important because that creates the town. That's why it's here. You can only, I mean, I guess it's beneficial to keep your history as long as it's intact and safe to do so. I mean, in the, I guess in the avenue of structures. I think I would have to go back to probably benefit versus risk. We have a lot of Forest Service land around town and I know that people like to throw out and around, buying it up or using it for other things. And I guess in an example like that, benefit versus risk, does it benefit your town? Is it going to be lucrative? Is it going to be helpful? Is it going to be detrimental? You'd have to benefit risk analysis to see if it's worth selling, buying, developing long-term.
Counselor Phillips?
How would you ensure transparency and fairness in your decision-making processes regarding planning and zoning?
Honesty is always your best policy. If you're willing to say it to one person, you say it to everybody. But you also have to be willing to hear what you don't want to hear because sometimes that adversity presents solutions in itself.
Thank you.
How would you handle feedback from community members with opposing viewpoints?
Listen, hear what they have to say, digest it to see if it's something that... Listen, hear what they have to say, digest it to see if it's something that really is a legitimate concern. Is it something that can be incorporated? Or is it something that is not a possibility, I guess, based upon the direction that you're going? Is it something that could be worked out or learned from?
Thank you. I appreciate all three of you. You could go ahead and have a seat unless anybody has any other questions. The town appreciates all three of you applying for this. Sometimes it makes you go a little bit outside of your comfort zone, so I do appreciate it. Ms. Jeremiah said we can only choose two tonight, so please don't get completely discouraged if you are not chosen. So we do have this item scheduled for a potential executive session. I can read the verbiage here. Does anybody on the council feel that we need to go into executive session? Okay. I don't think so either. Kristi, would you just explain how we're gonna vote then, please?
Yes, Mayor, running council. You each have a ballot on... At your seat and you... We're gonna take one vote, vote for two people to serve. I will... I'll pick those up, I'll tally it, I'll read off the votes. And if somebody has a majority vote, they'll get seat one. If there's two majority votes, we'll fill both seats. If there's a tie, we'll go to a second vote.
Thank you. If everybody could mark their ballots and we'll let Kristi pick those up.
Okay, just give me one minute here.
I feel like there's some fun music we could be playing right now.
Be better than the silence, I bet.
You can sing us a song, Counselor Heisler.
Eric, sing for us.
I think Jeremiah's got...
Next time, bring your guitar.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read the votes. Jeff Phillips voted for Larry McCormick and Mimi Sorenson. Councilmember Heisler voted for Derek Cavey and Mimi Sorenson. Mayor Irwin voted for Derek Cavey and Mimi Sorenson. Councilmember Turner voted for Larry McCormick and Mimi Sorenson. Vice Mayor Buse voted for Derek Cavey and Mimi Sorenson. And Councilmember Farno voted for Larry McCormick and Mimi Sorenson. So Mimi Sorenson got a majority vote, so she'll be... Make a motion for vote number one and then we have a tie, three to three, between applicant Cavey, Derek Cavey and Larry McCormick. So if you'll all please vote again for just one person this time and this one will be between Derek and Larry, please. I'm ready to tally, to let you guys know the votes. Councilmembers Turner, Councilmember Phillips, and Councilmember Farno voted for Larry McCormick and Councilmembers Heisler, Mayor Irwin, and Vice Mayor Buse voted for Derek Cavey, so we have another tie. I'm gonna give these back to you if you guys will please re-vote on the backside for me and just write the person's name. Oh, do you have one more?
We have one more, don't we?
I do.
Farno, Councilmember Farno doesn't because he used two pages for the first one. Just write. We have a tie again. We do. I'm not sure what to do at this point.
I guess we'll have to go into executive session and discuss it. So pursuant to ARS 38-431 3A1, the council may vote to enter into executive session, a public majority vote of the members constituting a quorum. A public body may hold an executive session for the following purpose: discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, appointment, or promotion; demotion, dismissal, salaries, disciplining or resignation of a public officer, appointee, or employee of any public body, except with the exception of salary discussions, an officer, appointee, or employee may demand that discussion or consideration be required at a public meeting. The public body shall provide the officer, appointee, or employee with written notice of the executive session as appropriate, but not less than 24 hours for the officer, appointee, or employee to determine whether discussion or consideration should occur at a public meeting. The discussion tonight is regarding possible appointment of another applicant to fill the Planning and Zoning Commission seats. I would entertain a motion.
I move to go to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. We will be back shortly.